Welcome, everybody, to the MISD Board of Trustees Regular School Board Meeting on August 18th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. The first thing that we're going to do is call the meeting to order and say allegiance to the pledge. Phil, please stand up.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, we pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
Good, how are you, sir?
Do we have any special recognitions or anything? Do we have any recognitions today?
Yes.
Dr. Morrison, do we have any special recognitions that you'd like to bring up?
We have some phenomenal special recognitions. I'm going to ask Dr. Lopez to come forward, and we are recognizing some extraordinary educators in our district and extraordinary students in our district.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board. I have a very special person to present to you tonight, so if I could ask Ms. Cindy Seifel, please to come up. I wanted you to be standing here whenever I'm talking about you, okay? So this is Ms. Cindy Seifel. Ms. Seifel is the Montgomery Elementary School music teacher. Ms. Seifel was selected as her Campus Teacher of the Year this past year in 1920, and then we took her as the District Elementary Teacher of the Year to Region Six. Region Six has over 57 school districts, and Ms. Seifel was elected the Region Six Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Woo-hoo!
So I told our leadership team this afternoon, that yesterday when Cindy and I were talking, I said, "You don't have to prepare anything," but I knew that she might want to say just a few words, and I wanted you to hear her voice because it is so precious about kids. So before you do, and look, she came prepared. I did not ask that. We have a special presentation for you, and it's all about Cindy.
Awesome.
Sweet.
Dedicated.
Devoted.
Groundbreaker.
Compassionate.
Passionate.
Passionate.
Super sweet.
Tenacious.
Tenacious.
Jolly.
Amazing.
Genuine.
Selfless.
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 Humble and determined.
Outstanding.
Encouraging.
Role model.
Admirable.
Inspiring.
Inspirational.
Inspiring.
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 Aw-inspiring.
Sunshine.
Breath of fresh air.
Love.
Cindy is positively contagious. She makes each of us want to be a better person.
Each and every child that walks into my classroom has a voice, and I make it my purpose, my mission, my passion, to help them to find it and to show them the power that it holds. Because some people, some kiddos, don't speak through pen and paper, or test, or presentation, or project. Some speak through a song that they sing, or some speak through a drum, or a ukulele, or an instrument that they play, and some speak through a scarf while they're dancing, or by acting onstage with a character, or through a puppet. See, I want each and every child to know that they have a voice, and that their voice is important, and that when they find it, and when they use it, the people will listen. They will be heard, and because of that, they will find the power to make a difference in the world. I want them to believe that they can do that.
My performance. You go ahead and hang. Okay, I should have used this as a Kleenex instead of a promontage. Because I'm a music teacher, you know, performance is my thing, so you're always ready to perform. But this is more a thank you than it is a performance. My first year in Montgomery, I met my team in July. We got together with Mrs. Fitzpatrick, and then in August, my family, we lost our house in Harvey, and everything in it. And after my neighbors, my MES team, one of which is here right now, Ms. Laurel Plonk, they were the first people at our doorstep to help, aside from our neighbors. And I knew at that moment that I was in a really special place. And I have this quote in my class that says, "When words fail, music speaks." And so I have just a little tiny bit of a song. I didn't write it. I didn't write this song, but it definitely speaks. I hope I can play it. It goes like this. It goes, "I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, bringing something we must learn, and we are led to those who help us most to grow if we let them and we help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I'm who I am today because I knew you." And I'm who I am today and right now because of this amazing district that I work for, because of the incredible people that I work with and that have seen my heart and my passion and allowed me to live it, and to those beautiful kiddos that I get a chance to learn with and grow with every single day. And I am so humbled and so grateful to be able to represent this Montgomery family, and I am even more grateful for each of you, that you give us as teachers the time, the time to know our kiddos, and the time to love our kiddos before and above everything else. Because like I said, every single one of those kiddos has a voice, and they don't always speak in the way that we expect them to. And to be able to have that time and that opportunity to help them find that voice and to really be able to listen to it makes all of the difference in the world. So thank you. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for allowing us to do what we do. Well. Thank you. Thank you. And we're not done yet with the good stuff. We had one more presentation tonight, so if I could ask our Montgomery High School principal, Dr. Andrea Scher, to come up. Where should you go, Lyley?
Oh, no. I don't bring anybody tonight. So, good evening, Board President, fellow Board members, and Superintendent Morrison, District Admin. Nice to finally meet you all in person. Before I ask the two to come up that are here tonight, I just want to say, if you've ever had a high school student or know anything about high school, one of the single most organizations that most people are familiar with is the Student Council. It's nationally recognized for character and service and scholarship, and so I want that to really resonate with you in thinking about all the districts that are in the state of Texas, and all the high schools that are in the state of Texas. And I'd like you to hear from Ms. Zolki and our wonderful senior leader, Mr. Reed over here.
Thank you so much. In December of last year, our council came to Ms. Pope and myself, asking us to run for a state office. We really didn't know if it was a great year, but each school that runs has to pick a platform to run on, so they have to pick a topic that resonates to both high school level and middle level students. Our council chose the topic of consent. It's something that kids get in trouble for if they don't recognize boundaries of others, and they struggle with this daily in their lives. These kids did not shy away from crucial conversations about consent when it comes to personal and personal space and property invasions, or navigating relationships, and this led them to formulate our campaign slogan, which was "Ask, Listen, and Respect." So we ordered our giveaways, we practiced speeches, we built a booth, we painted banners, and spent all of our campaign money, and then COVID happened. So we went back to the drawing board, we built a website, we filmed videos, thanks a lot to Ms. Foster, and we took to social media to launch our campaign. We've given you all some tokens from our election. And needless to say, May 1st, although we weren't in school, was a very victorious day for Montgomery High School. At the annual conference, we not only found out we would be taking over the presidency of the Texas Association of Student Councils, but were also awarded a scholarship from TASSP for helping our principal, at that time Ms. Hendricks, meet unfunded mandates on our campus. I was also named the State Advisor of the Year, something I had to keep secret since April, when I filmed my acceptance speech. It was very difficult. So now I'd like to introduce the starting right tackle of the Montgomery Bears football team, the Student Council President, and the TASC District Seven and State President, Mr. Reed Turner.
Give it a little height.
Thank you, Ms. Zolki, and since the election, we have been on a Zoom tour of Texas. Soon after we were elected, I led discussions with our Board of Directors, which produced the first public statement for TASC regarding social injustice. I also got the opportunity to give a welcome address to the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals at their summer board meeting advocating for student voice, and then Ms. Zolki and I also presented as a part of the panel at the Texas Association of Secondary Administrators on the subject of how to keep students connected during this difficult time. Most of our work this summer has led up to presiding over our first major board meeting on August 1st, which we had a really hard time writing deficit budgets, also revising our constitution to accommodate virtual election processes, and creating a statewide service project that will support foster families across the state of Texas. We are currently collaborating with Hope's Bridge Research Center in Montgomery to help implement this project in our own community. The Montgomery High School Student Council has a solid reputation for developing student leaders through their involvement and now their position in TASC. We will use our leadership positions to make sure students and administrators across the state of Texas know and love Montgomery. We would like to thank the Board of Trustees for allowing us to share our success story with you tonight, and we will continue to advocate for student voice and the planning and implementation of intentional school programs, and thank you.
And Mr. Dossi, I think it's just a word of caution for all of us, that at some point we will all be working for Reed, so I thought it would be a good idea for us to get to know him tonight. But as I'm in my Listening Learning Tour of Montgomery, having amazing teachers like Ms. Zolki and Ms. Seifel, and great students like Reed, is why we are an A-rated school district. So thanks for allowing us to recognize him tonight.
Thank you so much. Awesome presentations there. I don't think we have any comments to the board tonight. There was one thing that I needed to make a comment on regarding the tax rate that we had. So with our update tonight, we had planned on doing an announcement at the district's tax rate. On Friday, August 7th, the district published its annual notice regarding the adoption of the tax rate. The notice stated that we would be conducting a public hearing regarding the tax rate and that we would be adopting the district's tax rate this evening. Unfortunately, the district is waiting on some necessary information, and we won't be able to conduct this public hearing or adopt the tax rate until this information is received. It's our intent to hold both activities, the public hearing and the adoption of the tax rate, at the next regularly scheduled MISD Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, September 15th. We appreciate the understanding of our community and look forward to presenting the information at that time. So that public announcement has been made by your MISD School Board of Trustees. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and go into the consent agenda. We have two items there. Consider the approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
I move that the board approves minutes as presented from the last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. The second consent agenda item is considering the approval of the amended order and notice of election, November 3rd, 2020.
I move to approve the amended order and notice for the election, November 3rd, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. With that, we'll go ahead and go into the first action item, which is considering the approval of the RFP for demographic services.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. We're going to ask our CFO, Chris Lynn, to come forward. As always, we have to not only deal with circumstances as we find them today, but always be looking ahead and to plan strategically for our needs for our schools and our district. And we're going to ask Chris Lynn to come forward with a request for the board to consider.
Good evening. Before my arrival, the district had decided it was necessary to start the planning process for a demographic services. Unfortunately, the district shut down right after that due to COVID, and so we have reissued that request for proposal for demographic services. Just so the board knows, the district did comply with all required state laws. We advertised in the newspaper as required. We did receive proposals from three interested firms. You have their information in your packet this evening. The firms were Population and Survey Analyst, otherwise known as PASA, Templeton Demographics, and MGT Consulting Group. All proposals were evaluated based on the criteria in the request for proposal, and this evening we would like to recommend the proposal from Population and Survey Analyst for demographic services, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Have they ever worked for us before?
Yes, sir. It is my understanding that they have worked previously in this district, as well as many other districts across the state of Texas, and to my understanding, the district was pleased with their past work.
What was their timeframe they worked for us? Was it in that most recent bond election?
It was '18, I think.
The last time that this firm worked for us?
2015 bond, right before the 2015 bond.
And they list us in '18.
Any other questions from the board?
We're, I know they've worked for us, you said, "We're satisfied with PASA. We're happy with the results we got from them." Could we discuss if this is the signaling of a future bond? Dr. Morrison?
Let me address that. What this allows us to do is to get necessary information. If you wait until you actually know you need a bond, you've probably waited too long. And so what this will allow us to do is gather information, report back to the board, start to have conversations in the community. So it's not the start of a bond, it is a start of our responsibility to be strategic and look ahead to the needs of the district. And we can't do that in absence of data, and this will provide one of the key components of data that's necessary for us to be good fiduciary officers of the taxpayer dollars.
Perfect. Thank you.
One other question, Jim. What precludes Templeton Demographics from being, it looks like in the rating there, but their price obviously is half. What precludes them from being considered?
Right. According, you know, according to the proposals, they were the lowest cost proposer. Under state law, you do not have to accept the lowest proposer. It is my understanding that the firm had worked previously in the district as well, and maybe perhaps the district was not as satisfied with their services as some other firms.
Yeah, I believe that they forgot Walden.
Well, I wasn't here for the '15 bond as far as this goes, but how close were they on that projection? Because I understand there was...
The Walden? The one where they forgot Walden?
No, sir. The 2015 bond, I understand there was some pretty major estimates that didn't come to happen.
I think you might be flip-flopping those. Yeah, PASA was fairly accurate. I mean, there was some growth that didn't come, but it wasn't what they missed. Templeton left out sections of subdivisions.
Fair enough.
And whole subdivisions, like, you know, 10,000 people.
Yes, sir. Just to comment on that, you know, there is never a perfect demographic report, because obviously conditions change based on economic factors, or what COVID, what other other factors may exist. So there never is a perfect report, but we feel confident that the firm we're recommending tonight can provide quality services to this district.
And I also just want to share that not only did we look at our past history with all of the firms if we had one, but we reached out to other school districts across the state and for the one that's not based in Texas, to other school districts to get a sense of their satisfaction. And to Mr. Lynn's point, there's no perfect group, but you're looking for them to not be perfect, but excellent, and we believe the firm that we're bringing forward to you is going to do good work for us if you choose to recommend and go forward with the suggestion.
Any other questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Excuse me. I move to accept the proposal from Population and Survey Analyst for demographic services.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The second action item that we have on the agenda tonight is considering the approval of Budget Amendment Number Two.
And this is, again, Mr. Lynn, I just want to take the opportunity, this board has been very direct about its desire to have a balanced budget. The amendment that we bring forward to you tonight will get us closer to that, and I want to take this opportunity not only to thank Mr. Lynn for his tireless effort and the work that's going to be presented for this amendment, but the entire staff has been working incredibly hard, and not only with the reopening of schools and the world of COVID, but to also make sure that we are doing what we need to do to address budget issues, make sure our schools always have what they need, but to have a budget that is balanced to move forward. So Budget Amendment Two will not get us quite there, but it's going to get us closer, and then it is our goal by Budget Amendment Three to do that, which this board has directed, and that is to present a balanced budget. Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir. As Dr. Morrison said, the staff has been extremely busy in helping me undertake this task, and so I want to thank them as well. Just to give an overview, so that the community kind of knows where we started and where we are, when we first had our first budget workshop on June 1st, the proposed deficit at that time was $2.8 million. And since that time, we have worked through some additional revenue measures, some first cuts, and the budget that the board approved had a deficit of $1.6 million. Last month, we brought to you Budget Amendment Number One, and that reduced the deficit by $836,000. Tonight, we are bringing Budget Amendment Number Two, that has an additional $472,000 worth of cuts or reductions, and so we are not quite to that balanced budget yet, but we are continuing to work on that. Also, you'll notice in your packet, in the budget amendment this evening, there are two additions to the budget. That is due to the damage at MJH that occurred over the summer, and so I need to properly record the revenues from the insurance recovery, and then also properly record and adjust the budget for the expenditures that are going to be going out associated with that. So those are the additions that you see on the budget amendment this evening. But I'd be happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Chris, let me ask you a question. We've got a lot of numbers to go in the right direction. You guys are working real hard, but at this stage of the game, as we all know, most of these numbers are targets. We're going to be high on low on some, we're going to be low on some. Are there any areas that concern you more than others relative to the district's ability to meet these targets?
The budget is a roadmap, okay? And it's ever-changing. It changes from day to day. And so, you know, we're constantly facing different challenges with COVID, okay? Some of those challenges may be in expenditures for personal protective equipment for district staff. Some of those challenges may be students not coming to school this year, you know, parents keeping them at home. And so we do face challenges with our potential ADA. Other challenges that we face, not necessarily for this budget, but things that we have to be cognizant of and to support some of the reasons we're getting to a balanced budget, we don't know what the future holds, okay? The economic conditions that COVID has caused for the state of Texas probably will have some impacts next year as the legislature starts to meet in Austin, and potentially could impact our funding that we receive from the state of Texas. And so that's why we're working so diligently to make sure that we shore up our budget this year, so that we're prepared to face those challenges as we move forward.
Chris, you mentioned that when we started this process, we were at $1.6 million deficit, the original budget that was approved. So you mentioned the cuts. Where are we at total now?
As we sit here tonight, we're at $368,000 deficit. So that deficit has been trimmed since the budget adoption by a little over $1.2 million.
Great news. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to all the administrators, and I know you guys have worked really hard. We kind of put a big challenge out there for you in these last couple of months, and you listened. You've really worked hard to try to get us to that place. But the one thing I would say is, to me, this is step number one. The other thing that we have, as a board, committed is, we want the highest-paid teachers and staff in this county. And so in order to get that stage, we're going to have to keep going. Not putting a timeline on it, but that's what we have committed to try to do, and so whatever you guys can do, keep going, don't stop, and so I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done. Any other questions from the board? Comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve Budget Amendment Two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next action item that we have on the agenda tonight is considering the approval of the 2021 Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System, T-Test, Calendar, and Appraisers.
So we'll bring to you tonight, you know that according to our board policy, DNA legal, we are required to use either T-Test to evaluate our teachers, or a locally adopted appraisal system, and we use Texas State Adopted System, T-Test. And as a board, we ask that you approve our appraiser list and our calendar. So if we'll take a look at our list, it says the appraisers are required to pass the T-Test Appraiser Certification Exam each year for the first three years, and after three consecutive years of certification, an appraiser must pass the exam once every three years to maintain certification. So we bring the names to you tonight, you have them in your board material, and all of those administrators have passed their tests, and all of their certifications are And then the next item is our calendar. Also in DNA legal, you're required as a board to pass our calendar. Our calendar does align with the 2021 instructional calendar that MISD passed. It does provide all T-Test trainings and updates are completed before the first day of school, before students arrive. It allows for teacher goal setting to be established by September 11th, and then by September 14th, that excludes the, I'm sorry, excludes the observations in the two weeks after the campus T-Test orientation is completed, and then the summative window closes no later than the 15th day of instruction. And that summative evaluation is where the principal and the teacher will get together and discuss how the year went, and if they met those goals. So tonight, we bring you the appraiser list, and we bring you the calendar for your approval.
Were there any questions from the board? Is there any impact to this, if we have to shut down schools and all that stuff?
Good question. So last year, leaving around March, we still had to do our summatives, but our principals still committed to having those evaluations. They still conducted those evaluations. We just did them through Zoom. We considered all the teaching throughout the year. It was an option for us to actually have that waived and not do an evaluation, but we felt that the process was important for us to meet with our teachers and still talk about the year because we taught for most of the year. And that's important to have that one-on-one connection with your teacher and sit down and look at how the year went. So we did not waive that evaluation. We still, our principals were excellent and still met with every teacher and zoomed with them. So I would suspect that we would continue this year if we closed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
Move to approve the 2021 MISD appraisal calendar and the T-Test appraiser list.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, so I have the next item on the agenda, and it's an information item. Each year, we bring to you the Montgomery ISD Employee Handbook. And as you know, we adapt ours according to the Tasby Model Handbook. Provided in your board material, you'll see all the changes in red quite a bit going on this year. Mostly, there was, the majority of the updates focused on student rights, standards of employee conduct, and the reporting requirements to TEA for misconduct. And so there was a lot going on in the handbook, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
I believe the handbook had some changes with Title IX.
Yes.
And I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Are there any, anything that causes you concern or anything in there? Mr. Morris, I think you've picked up those responsibilities, correct?
I have picked up that responsibility. There are a lot of changes in the processes and postings that we had to do as of last Friday. We do have those posted on our website. We are in the process of training all employees on the new Title IX regulations and training the investigators, the decision-makers, the facilitators. We're in that process right now.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Phil, on Title IX, a little bit later in the agenda, it's an information item. There's a plethora of policies that come from Tasby that will be a first read. One of them are updated policies regarding Title IX. And I'm glad you pulled that as a question because sometimes in a school district, we're all, we think we're familiar with a certain topic such as Title IX. And I will say, I've been stressed to think about a time when I've seen something that we would think we're familiar with change as radically as Title IX has with the responsibilities for the school district to communicate to communities, to parents, to schools, to train staff, not only on new regulations, but new ways that we have to enforce Title IX. And so we are going to veer on over-communication. And that's everything, as Mr. Morris said, from making sure that our current policies were published on our webpage as of Friday, and that as soon as the board adopts the new policies that are suggested by Tasby, that those will then be posted, and that we have a rigorous training program for our schools and our staff so that we are in full compliance with Title IX. It is quite literally a sea change. And as I have said to some of you, if you see Mr. Morris looking very tired, it's either because he's doing Title IX duties or COVID duties, and sometimes at the same time. So it's a huge change.
Thank you for that explanation.
Just real quick, one other question, Ms. Lopez, is, and I noticed it's in red, so I guess it was an addition, the discharge of convicted employees.
Yes.
How was that addressed beforehand if this is new information?
So they're really highlighting it with the Do Not Hire Registry or Register that came out last year. And so you still would look at a convicted employee, they still had 72 hours to report any type of felony, but now there is more weight to the word that immediately when someone is convicted, that you have the requirement to terminate them immediately. And also, last year, when the Do Not Hire Registry came out, all of our current employees that we have went through that process. We had to upload all of the names of our employees to see if we had any hits and if we had to terminate anyone immediately at that time. So now it's in the processes of human resources whenever we hire someone that we take a look at that register.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is the District and Campus Improvement Plans.
Thank you, Mr. Dotsey. We're going to ask Mr. McFadden to come forward. Every organization has to commit to continuous improvement. And I think it was Jim Collins who talked about that the enemy of good or of great is settling for good. And we've got really good schools, but those really good schools want to continually be a great school, and our district wants to be continuously great. So therefore, we must commit to looking at data, to looking at changes, to looking at things that will help us better serve the students of Montgomery ISD. This board has adopted goals. Our campuses have aligned to those goals and also aligned to state and federal standards. So every year, it's not just dusting off the plan and changing a thing here or there, but it's a rigorous examination at the campus site of what has to change so that each campus can feel like it is fulfilling its duty to give every child in Montgomery ISD the very best education possible. Mr. McFadden is assuming new duties this year, and one of them is our School District and Campus Improvement Plans. And so, Mr. McFadden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Who knew I would like public speaking so much? I get to take the mask off. So they should have incorporated that in junior high, and I would have said a lot more in class. Campus Improvement Plans, District Improvement Plans, want to talk a little bit about process before we talk about the plans themselves. Under Board Policy BQ Legal, the board has two things they have to concern, two things concerning District and Campus Improvement Planning. The first thing they have to do is create and adopt goals, which you guys did last spring, I believe, or maybe even earlier than that. I'm not certain of the timeline on that. And the other thing is, you have to ensure that a district improvement plan and improvement plan for each campus are developed, reviewed, and revised annually for the purpose of improving the performance of all students. It's a big task. I put up, I'm going to walk you kind of through the process of how this occurs at the district level and at the campus level. What I have here is the software we use. This is a screenshot from Plan for Learning, which is the software that we use. It makes it an easy, seamless process. The customer puts the goals in, and the goals are automatically transferred to the campus plans, and the principals have a starting place. No improvement plan is one person's document. It is a culmination of every department at the district level, and every department or campus department at the campus level. And it's in conjunction with your district advisory committee and your campus advisory committee. You gave us four goals. Four, ones over instruction or academics. Two was over safety. Three was over finance, which, that's a big one. And four was on customer service. And so you, they're aligned here briefly. I'm not going to read the whole slide to you, but that's basically what the goals cover. And then we develop performance objectives. So Goal One, Performance Objective One would be, under challenging curriculum, assess individual student achievement, support efforts to ensure excellent academic performance. We're going to come up with several. I think we have six performance objectives, and under every performance objective, we're going to have strategies. And at the district level, they're broad because they're going to become more and more specific as they reach the campus level. And I'm going to show you that in just a second. So the performance objective one simply says we're going to maintain an overall A rating as a district under the new state accountability system, and we're going to support all campuses to do the same thing. Strategy one-
Mr. McFadden, can you go back real quick, just for the benefit of any community member watching our board meeting, can you give a little bit more explanation of HB3? We know what it is, but I want to make sure that we're clear to the community what that entails.
House Bill 3?
Yes.
The new accountability system, the A through F system, complete overhaul of accountability. Used to, the old accountability system was getting all students over the low bar. And you guys have heard me say this a lot, getting all students over the low bar. We've moved that, we've changed that system. And it was a philosophy change that took, we're now into year seven and year eight of no longer getting every kid over a low bar, but moving every kid a year of progress. So we're focusing much more on getting kids over the low bar, getting kids over the meets bar, which is college-ready, and getting kids over the master bar, which is most perfect on those steps. So if you think of a string, the easiest way to think of it, if you push the bottom of the string, what happens to the top of the string? It's laid out front of you, you push the bottom. Nothing happens to the top. The bottom moves, but if you pull the string from the top, the whole string moves. And so if we were never teaching at the mastery level, how could we ever expect kids that were already at the meets level to get to master? And so we had to change that philosophy. And House Bill 3 forced that when they implemented the A through F. So it's a really good system for all kids, and it no longer leaves kids, the average kid who's already getting over the low bar. It forces instruction on every kid in your class and every kid in our schools. And so it's a good, it's a good system, the A through F system. And our teachers have done a tremendous job, our principals have done a tremendous job of encouraging that philosophy change. It's hard to not have 100% over the low bar, but we have lots of programs for kids that aren't getting over the low bar. We also, those kids at the middle bar and the master bar need a full year of growth just as much as every kid that's not getting over the low bar. So it's an equitable system for all kids. And so it's a really good system, and we're doing really good under that accountability system right now. We want to maintain that. We want to maintain that priority. I think we have three or four secondary schools are A, and half, four or six of our elementary campuses are A's, I believe, and then our overall rating is an A as well. And we're working with all of our campuses to keep the bar moving. But that's what Goal One is really looking at, keeping a solid, challenging curriculum, moving all individual kids forward. And that's what ties it into our strategy. So when we go to Strategy One for that, we're going to implement the Montgomery Line Curriculum, which we've spent a lot of time over the last two years fleshing out and developing. And our instructional coaches have helped us a lot with that. But you'll see strategies for that at the campus level as well. And then we have other strategies under each goal. So that's the process. Now, if you look at a campus improvement plan, I chose the Montgomery Junior High campus because that's where I was principal for a long time, and now Ms. P. Javon is the principal of.
And needless to say, that's an upgrade, correct, Mr. McFadden?
It's an upgrade.
Just to be clear.
We're going to look at her plan, and under Goal One, she's going to have a more specific performance objective for that. 90% of her student groups will meet or exceed the approach standard. 60% will meet meets, and 35 will be masters. And so then she's going to have strategies underneath that to achieve that. Now, if you look, remember back at the district ones, our goal was broad. We want to maintain an A. But as it gets to the campus level, it's going to become more specific and more measurable at that level. And so then she would have strategies, and this is a great strategy because we all talked about this, and she put it into action in her plan. We talked about what happens from COVID slug. We had school canceled after spring break, basically. And we went to an online, had the flip of the switch, and we all realized it wasn't as great as it could be, and we're struggling with that even now. We're coming up with a better, in our eyes, it's a better system. Still got some glitches, and we're working them out, but it's been positive so far for the most part. But she, early on, said, we're going to collect those teeth that were covered in the last nine weeks of school, and we're going to run the in-surfaces in the summer and then our pre-in-service before school start to make sure we're reviewing and reteaching those during the beginning of the school year. So she put some thought into what happened, how do I maintain Goal One, which is a strong academic program for the district, and she put it into place into a strategy that she can accomplish. She also had a strategy on early identification for student seating, targeted reading and math remediation, and she used data, she's going to pull data all year long to track these kids to make sure they're making progress at every level. And so the campus improvement plans and the district plan are living, breathing documents. They're going to change throughout the year, depending on what our needs are. If we have to close school again, we're going to have to add a lot more about remote instruction here. And she has put a lot in her plan for that. Okay, so getting back to the goals. You set the standard for us, and then we had to come up with performance objectives, and then the campuses build their performance objectives based on the district plan. Okay, so included in your workbook, so you're, this is going to take a while. We have 570 pages worth of district improvement plans and copies of each campus improvement plan. So I'm going to get to not wearing my mask for a while here. You have a brief synopsis of the major goals set by each campus for the 2021 school year. Each of these plans are going to be posted on our website. Each of them will become part of the annual report that I do every January or February. I'll bring you an annual report for the following year once it's closed out. And then, most importantly, and I put it in red because it's important, each of these plans will be evaluated quarterly to assess progress towards the district and campus goals. So we're going to revisit these four times a year and have to formatively assess them. How are we doing on this goal? Where do we have to come back? What do we need to work harder on? Because things happen on campuses, and you lose, sometimes you lose track, and you have to refocus on what efforts did I let slip, and what do I need to get back in focus? And so that allows us to do that four times a year. And so at this time, instead of going through all 10 of these plans and me not knowing all of the data that's in those templates, I'm going to invite Angie up, Ms. Javon, to go over her, just one sampling of the junior high, the Montgomery Junior High's campus goals for the 2021 school year. Come on up, Angie. I'll put my mask on, and I won't, I won't touch you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me tonight. Mr. McFadden is correct. The campus improvement plan is a working document, and like we've always said, excellence is a moving target, so we're constantly moving. So what we did is usually the campus improvement plan, we start looking at at the end of the year and throughout the summer. We didn't know we were going to go to remote. It was in, you know, we had traditional in-person. So what we decided was, we've got to do something with our campus improvement plan, too. We've already started this. Now we need to also go to remote as well to make sure that our kids are going to be successful doing that as well. So I went back, and like he said, it's a working document. We go back and we adjust and change that as we need to. We also come up with just giving to the district the new campus improvement highlights that we're going to go over. So these are some, and I'm not going to bore you with everything because there's 40 pages of it, but I'll give you what Montgomery Junior High is going to do this year. First of all, with the staff at in-service, I talked about the school health and safety, what we're going to do for them and the students. So we went over protocol, procedures, and practices, and how we were going to provide that safe environment to these kids and to our staff. Some of the things that we did was, we changed up our master schedule. We had eight periods. We went to four. We went to an A and B schedule. It allowed us to have less transition periods, to be able to social distance. It allowed us to have four lunches instead of three, so we could, instead of having 300 or 400 kids in a lunch, we only have 200. Our lunches have about 600 chairs in them, so that allows us to social distance. Transitioning times, arrival and dismissal times, we went ahead and staggered those as well. And for arrival time, I can split our classes up. So I would have sixth grade in our cafeteria, I'd have seventh grade in the small gym, eighth grade in the large gym, where I used to have seventh and eighth all in the large gym. We weren't able to social distance like that. So there was a lot of thought that you had to put into on, do we need to start school early? Do we need to, can we keep it like it is and just stagger those bell times? And so we ended up doing that. The bell times have changed as well. Of course, we have hand sanitizer stations all around the school. We have our classrooms with our disinfectant sprays. We've changed our athletic periods to first periods so that when they do practices, we can go ahead and use the fogger machines in the locker rooms and make sure that those athletes are taken care of as well that will come at the end of the day. PE, we're not going to have them dressing out for right now so that our lockers are not used as much. And just on and on. I mean, from elevator safety to what we're doing in the classrooms with the desks, how we're moving those to make sure that we're social distancing, to making sure we're within the UIL guidelines with fine arts and athletics as well, as far as, you know, when we have our games in our athletic facilities. You know, Coach Hurd has already come over and let us know how many parents can be in there at one time and how we have to stagger that. And the machines, we're going to have- stagger that. And the machines we're gonna have to use to make sure those are clean, too, on the courts and, and things such as that. Even with visitors, only visitors essential to school operations are able to be permitted into the building. So just going all, uh, over all of that with our staff to make sure they feel comfortable, too, that they're safe. And then we'll also go over that with our students, too, when we have our grade level meetings. Um, another one is MJH Student Council. We're gonna make sure and implement this year our Bears Care, which is a year of community service for our, um, students. The first thing we're gonna do is it's centered about, around the hashtag, are you okay? So we want to make sure we empower everyone to like meaningfully connect with one another, start a caring conversation on anyone who is struggling with life, because we know right now these are uncertain times and there are people struggling. So we want to make sure we start out August with that. And then we go into supporting our local fire department and police departments, our food banks, our senior living facilities, our homeless shelters and things such as that. So our, our student council is gonna start that up this year. Uh, we have our virtual remediation classes. Usually in our remediation classes, we've always pulled groups, our small groups. Well, we aren't able to do that right now because it's gone virtually. So we wanted to make sure we had that online type of remediation class, too. And right now for like our reading, they're doing our Readworks online program. And our math is doing a prodigy online program. It's working very well. They're also doing that on Zoom online, but also letting, well, the, the teachers are zooming with the students as well each week. But they're also making sure that they're participating in that online piece as well, too. And we're doing that pre-assessment to make sure we know exactly where they are so that when they come back, we can start with that and do those small group instruction as well. Uh, virtual engagement meetings, which I love. All teachers are doing that at least once a week to make sure that we check up on our students mentally, socially, emotionally, see how they're doing, want to connect with our students as well, even though we're going virtually. We know how important it is to make sure that we connect and have those relationships with those students. Um, we're gonna start introducing our six character traits. Uh, we started with bears, such as with B, better our world. That's, we're gonna ask them, you know, who are the bears? Well, we better our world. We exemplify excellence. We act with integrity. We respect ourselves and others. We stand up for what's right. And our, our counselors are gonna start that as well. Not only are they gonna start that on Bear Buzz, which will go virtually, but they'll start that when the kids come back as well. Um, student leadership, I'm gonna create a principal leadership council. I haven't ever done that before, but I'm gonna start that and speak with our, um, teams that consist of our presidents and captains of our clubs, our electives, our athletic sports. I'm gonna start with them first, meet with them every six weeks, and just get their thoughts and ideas on suggestions of how we're building a positive community and campus, you know, building leaders, creating a positive environment for our students, kind of get what they feel needs to happen at Montgomery Junior High. And then, of course, we trained our teachers on all the technology that they needed to make sure that remote started out great, and I truly believe it did. Um, we made sure to train them on their Google, Google meets, their Zoom, their document camera, ClassLink, things such, such as that, to make sure that all of our teachers are successful. And one of the things that I think was wonderful is, you know, last March, we went home. And these teachers, some of them were by themselves. So they may not have known the technology as much and, and then they didn't really have anybody to reach out to. Well, here we're back at school. So these teachers have their teams. They can reach out to their teams. They're not just on their own. And everyone's helping one another, in which our theme is together we will, because together we will. And then we have our professional development. And the one thing that I love is we continue to send our teachers to capturing kids' hearts, lead forward training and Ruby Payne training, which ends up motivating our teachers, um, helping them get the most innovative and research training that they need. They love it, and we still have it in our budgets to do that as well, too. So those are the 10 things at this time that Montgomery Junior High is doing, just as new highlights for this year. That also includes the remote piece. So anything that you have questions on?
Very good job.
Yes, thorough.
I probably told you a little bit more than what you wanted to know, but-
Now, what I love about that is how much, how much she talked about things other than reading, writing, science and social studies. How many other tasks that schools have that are important things that we do. And that's why we really want our kids back where we can interact with them and, and educate them in all of those things. And Angie does a phenomenal job at campus planning, and she runs a pretty awesome campus as well.
Well, as much as we know that kids love, I mean, that's what we're here to do, is make sure that they learn academically. They also come because they need that social piece, too. They need that mental piece. They need that physical piece. They need all of that. We want to make sure that we educate the whole person, and that's what we try to do at Montgomery Junior High.
Yep. And all of our, if you, if you review our plans, all of our campuses put as much thought into it as, as Angie does, or Ms. Chapman, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. No, you're good. Good.
Ms. Chapman, can I ask you a, a quick question? Put you on the spot, and I apologize. But you and I had a chance to visit and walk your amazing campus and meet your teachers on Friday of last week. Just because it ties into our upcoming agenda item on the reopening of schools in phases. Uh, and the point that I'm gonna make over and over again is there's nothing about instruction in K-12 in the schools today that is, uh, familiar. Everything is having to be rethought. Can you just take something that we all understand is a challenge any year is how you do thoughtful transitions in between class periods with our students and what that's gonna look like on your campus after September 8th, when we have sixth, seventh and eighth grade back?
Sure. Well, we definitely have made sure that the bell schedule is very different because we are staggering our time. So let's say they arrive. When they arrive, of course, we have different seating for those particular kids. At 6:45 to 7, we'll have half of our population probably coming in at 7. They will all go to their classes, but we will stagger that by the bells. Sixth grade will go first at 7. About two minutes later, seventh grade will go, then eighth grade will go. And we'll also monitor, monitor that to make sure that if there are too many in the hall at that point, we'll make sure and continue that like a minute later. Then throughout the school day during those transition times, which I'm glad that we did A and B schedule because the kids aren't going eight periods, they're going four, which is less in the transition, we will also stagger that bell. So we've given enough time in between that time to stagger those as well, too, so that we don't have as many in the hallway. Because with that A and B schedule, if we were, we would have everybody in the hallway at one time, and we don't want that. There's also a directional hallway, so they will all be going one way at the very top and the bottom so that they're not coming into each other and wanting to, you know, I mean, all kids are gonna wanna talk and they're gonna wanna socialize and different things like that. Well, that kind of stops that at least a little bit. So they'll have that one directional piece as well, too. And we've got signage everywhere. We have some staircases, too, where some will go up and some will go down, so that will lessen that as well. And it's not that we don't want the kids to talk because, and, and socialize, because that, we know that that's a very important part of even going to school. But we also want to make sure that they're kept safe, that their masks are on at all time, that we can see them, that we're monitoring what's going on. Because I know when they go home, parents are gonna wonder what's going on, too, and how we're keeping them safe and what changes are happening. So we're making sure the transitional times are definitely staggered.
And I didn't tell Ms. Chapman I was gonna ask that question, so thank you.
No, you didn't.
But I think we all saw the picture from, uh, one of the early returns to school in a different state. Uh, and that picture, I'm sure, caused a lot of concern for communities across our country. And I just want to assure our board and our community that our 10 principals working with our senior staff, we're thinking through all of those things. We will not be perfect, but our standard is we're gonna try to be excellent to keep our students and staff safe. So thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, there was a couple of just comments that I had, if that's okay.
Come on up, Mr. McFadden.
Um, the first was, I, thank you for incorporating our, the board goals. Uh, the first time that we've seen those from last year, the board worked really hard to come up with that, that set. So I appreciate that. Um, one of the things that I would personally like to see is on the agenda items, if we can tie those into the board goals somehow, um, so that we can directly tie some of our agenda items back to those goals.
I think that's a great idea. Mr. Dossian, we have a workshop with the board on September the 22nd. And, uh, one of the things the board has asked for that workshop is for us to come back and revisit our goals and to talk about how we can make them not just things that look good on a piece of paper, but really are living and breathing in a guide for our entire school district. And, uh, during that time, also being able to put some, uh, more metrics to that so that we can not only tie in an agenda item to the goal, but then how we're measuring it and how we can report back to the board on how we're achieving those goals. So we'll have a lot to do on September the 22nd.
Thank you. Um, the other thing that hopefully we'll be able to talk about then is, um, as a board, we are hoping at some point to convert those goals into some sort of dashboard, you know, so we can see, you know, red, yellow, green, how we're doing on each one of those goals. So anyways.
Yeah, there is a, there is a process in Plan for Learning where you, you, uh, when you go through and you check off how you're doing, uh, attaining just one of the goals. So you can have a rating system. And I think they use red, yellow and, and green. And y'all, y'all may have access. If you don't have access, we can, you can get access to it so that you could see the ratings, uh, as they come through formally. But that's part of, part of the process.
And we've started as a staff to have conversations about how we can bring suggestions for the board to consider. They're your goals. They will be your metrics. Our job is to attain them. Uh, some of them, the academic ones are, are easier to measure because there are state standards, federal standards, our own Montgomery ISD expectations. There are some that will be a little bit more challenging. The customer service one is a great goal, but what's the measure? And so how do we start putting metrics to that? Uh, things like, uh, swift response to, uh, communication to a school. If we set an expectation of 24 to 48 hours of good customer service to respond to an inquiry or question, how do we measure that? And so we've started to think about data, uh, for the board to consider. And then ultimately, we're asked for you to adopt those key performance indicators into your goals. And then that way we can display them on a dashboard.
Thank you. Were there any other questions from the board? Okay, um, we'll next go into the first reading of the local board policy.
Thank you, Mr. Dossian. Uh, every year, there are an infinite number of changes that local school boards have to make. Uh, the legal ones are easy. We have to adopt those. There is no action necessary. Uh, but there are many changes to local school board policy to align to those, uh, to those legal requirements or changes as they require by TEA. TASB does an amazing job of helping us know what those changes ought to be. Uh, the hard work of the staff is not only to present them to you tonight, but to go through those policies and make sure that they're not just changed in the policies themselves, but that they are implemented across our school district, uh, and in our classrooms. And so each year, uh, we present the policies. We show the changes to the policies as recommended by a TASB. There's a requirement of a first reading, which we present to you tonight. Uh, and then we will come back, uh, and on the September meeting to ask your vote to make those policies realities. And at that point, uh, it's our job to make sure they're being enforced. So. If there are any questions about specific policies, otherwise, um, we will present them back to you in September for your vote.
Okay. Did, did the board have any questions about any of the policies that were changed or suggested to be changed? Okay, um, so we're gonna go ahead and go on to the agenda item that I know everybody is here for. But before you go into that, I just want to say again, thank you to all the staff, um, and the teachers and, and all the administration for all the hard work that you guys have been doing. Uh, we've been hearing there's some, there's been some very late nights lately. Um, and just in my own personal experience, uh, having talked with another administrator, um, trying to set up a meeting with her has been nearly impossible because she's up here working all the time, uh, trying to get things ready for school. So I really appreciate all the hard work. I know that a lot of the teachers and administrators, you're not just doing one job, but two, um, double work, you know, at times. And we really appreciate that. So anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Dossian. Uh, I will echo their heroic and heroic work going on across our school district. Uh, our teachers, our administrators, the support staff. Uh, it, it really is a complete rethinking of what we call K-12 public education. And always with safety of staff and students first and foremost, uh, but then quickly getting into keeping students and staff safe. What do we need to do to meet the academic, social, emotional needs of every student in our school district? Um, you know, it, it gets very real very quickly. Um, yesterday, as we have a COVID rapid response team, which as you know, uh, we shared is one of the different ways that we're trying to get to an immediate answer as, uh, as our schools come forward with us with questions, requests, considerations that we have to respond very quickly to. Uh, and so as we have started to get, uh, very familiar with terms like close contact, PPE, uh, and, and other pieces of information, you're starting to now not go from hypotheticals to, okay, this situation happened. Did it meet close contact? Were there masks? Was there social distancing? It didn't happen on campus, but when did those students, staff members actually arrive on campus? Who do we need to alert? Uh, and it is gonna be an incredible challenge and burden on our campuses and an incredible challenge and burden on, on this team. Uh, but we're all dedicated, again, to that proposition that we will, uh, return our students and staff safely to school for those who choose to come on September the 8th. Uh, but that we're not so presumptuous to think that we've got the answers all the time. We, we know what we know. We know what we don't know. And when we don't have an answer, we're gonna get an answer very quickly from anywhere from TEA to our neighboring school districts to, uh, the CDC if necessary. Um, but at the same time, yesterday, as we were having a meeting, uh, having these conversations and talking about our schools, I got a text from my son. And as you know, he is a, a student at Chapel Hill, and that was the first major university to decide after saying it was going to bring students back to shut down. Now, I know that's North Carolina, not Texas. Um, but it just, it's a constant reminder that this is very real, and we take it very, very seriously. Um, I'm very proud of the fact that, uh, although we, along with the other Montgomery school districts, made the decision and, and asked for your consideration, uh, to have, uh, our official opportunity to welcome students and staff back, uh, on September the 8th, uh, we did ask for a phased opening opportunity. And we started that, um, this past Monday and Tuesday, and, uh, all of us had the opportunity to be at elementary schools and, and to welcome students and open up the doors and see the little ones come out of the, uh, out of the, uh, out of the vehicles. And moms and dads did, did still cry. They did it virtually in some cases, and the camera didn't go directly in the classroom, uh, but it felt like real day of school. And, uh, and that followed after we started our actual virtual instruction, which began last Thursday and Friday. Uh, there are things that we've already looked at and said, you know what, this may be a best practice eventually when we get past, uh, the immediacy of the health issue with COVID that we might want to continue. So, uh, we've talked with our elementary principals, for example, but the one-on-one conferencing opportunities with pre-K and kindergarten was a gift because we could really meet the needs of those parents. And instead of having a number of families in one room, they each got their time. So we could really understand the unique needs of those little learners. Uh, and so we're gonna learn some things that will, we're never gonna go quote unquote, "back to normal," but we will get back to a new normal and we'll be better for it. Uh, so what I want to do is to ask our staff to come forward. We want to share with you, um, how we opened school. Uh, I'm very proud of how we opened. Uh, we, our standard, again, was not to try to be perfect, but to be excellent. And I think because of the dedication of our educators and our leaders, uh, we have a lot to be proud of. But there were some glitches. There were some challenges, and there were lots of areas of an opportunity to improve, and we will improve every day. So we want to have, um, Wendy and Dwayne and Meredith come forward and, uh, share some of how we opened school and what is to come. And then we're gonna ask, uh, Mr. Morris to come forward and talk to you about some of the changes to health regulations and procedures. And then we're going to talk to you about, uh, just how different things are, uh, through the vehicle and lens of our food service, which is extraordinary, but extraordinary challenging to feed our students safely in a world of COVID. And then, uh, we want to emphasize the critical importance. We have surveyed, uh, a lot, and we thank our community for their patience in answering those surveys. But the next survey that will be coming is the most important one because that's what we're gonna use to schedule, uh, for academic needs, for transportation and food service as we welcome our students back on September the 8th. So Ms. Graves, Dr. Graves.
Okay, so as, uh, as you've been told, we had to rethink every aspect of school. I just, we thought we had it down, then we were like, wait, we've got to rethink that as well. But the one thing that held true through all of this is that we were so happy to see our kiddos, um, on Monday. It was, it was wonderful to have them back in the building. So this was a picture at Lone Star of greeting the students coming in. You know, their mascot is the Lone Star. So we are so, that Longhorn, we're so happy to see you. Um, we had to rethink meet the teacher. So, uh, for pre-K and K, we felt like it was very, very important that our, uh, parents could actually come to the school to see the school, to see the classroom. Not only important for the parent, but important for the child so that they felt comfortable, um, coming the first day. So we scheduled through signup genius, um, meetings and the parents checked in. They did the whole, um, you know, self-check before they came in. Uh, they had to wear a mask. Uh, they met with the teacher. We allowed, uh, two parents, two guests per student. They went in, they were able to see the room, they were able to, um, sit down and talk with the teacher. And so it ended up being a really successful, um, meet the teacher for those kiddos because it wasn't a room full of adults and kids and the teacher trying to manage all of the, um, people that, that came for meet the teacher. So pre-K and K went really well. For our- For our first through fifth, we did our Meet the Teacher through Zoom, and it was a lot of fun. It was different. That's probably one thing we would not keep in the future. We probably will have our parents come in for Meet the Teacher. I think the kids enjoyed that probably more than the adults, the Zoom. So that was fun. Our first day of school, virtually for everyone, was August 13th. This is a picture of Carrie Adams teaching at Lone Star, second grade teacher. Our teachers are using CSO as our learning management platform. This was a decision made by the teachers in the district. We used CSO for our remote summer school this summer, just to make sure that it was something that we would like and that we would find user-friendly. Our teachers chose this option over Google Classroom for the younger kiddos. It's just a little bit more user-friendly and had a few more options for us when it came to working with the students. So elementary opted for CSO. Now, some voted for Google Classroom, some teachers, and so there were teachers that had a learning curve. It's gone very well. The training has been very well received by our teachers. We changed our entire back-to-school learning options for our teachers and focused strictly on training for the learning platform. So our teachers were inundated with training for CSO. Now, we had some teachers that had been using it all summer, or we had a couple of schools that had previously used CSO, so they didn't need as much training as schools that had not used CSO. With CSO, we're able to upload videos and assignments, and the students are able to respond very easily. Our first day of school for our kinder, I think we missed this slide. Maybe not. Okay, our first day of school for our kinder was Monday for pre-K and kinder. We had to rethink our specials and our specials rotation and how we were going to keep our kiddos safe while at specials. So this is a picture of our music teacher. At Kenan Elementary, I thought it was very creative. She used hula hoops and the carpet squares to help make sure that the students were socially distancing. I sat in during this lesson. It was a fun lesson, and they were socially distancing, but they still had a great time. And this is lunch, so you can see that we had to rethink lunch as well. Our students in the cafeteria have assigned seats. Every cafeteria looks just a little bit different because we have different tables at different cafeterias. So the principals worked with Mr. Morris on their table configuration and how to social distance in the cafeteria. This is, I believe, Kenan, and her tables work out perfectly. We have two students, one on each end of the table, and we have them spread out in the cafeteria.
Dr. Graves, real quick, again, just to make sure we're educating our community, some people might say, well, but I don't see these students wearing masks.
Yes, I guess. So our students that are nine and below, they are not required by the governor's order to wear a mask, although we highly, highly encourage them to wear a mask all day. It is not required. And so I noticed on the first day of school, as I started out, lots of them arrived with their masks, ready to go, and as the day went on, I saw fewer and fewer masks. So it's a learning process. With pre-K and K, you have a lot of routines to teach them, things that we do, how to act appropriately at school. And so we're going to have to teach social distancing, and we're going to have to teach the importance of wearing a mask, washing our hands, all of those things. And so we've spent a lot of time on that this week. Our students are used to going to centers where they have bags of materials that they can use and manipulate, so we've had to rethink that as well. So each day, a student will get one bag, and at the end of the day, we have to sanitize the bag of materials. So we're used to sharing and maybe rotating through those bags of materials, so we're having to really focus on one student, one bag, so that we can clean very well at the end of the day. This is our different phases of opening. We welcomed all of our students back, remote, pre-K through five on the 13th. We have welcomed back our pre-K and K on the 17th. Of course, our pre-K and K had the option of selecting remote rather than returning in person. We had 18 of our pre-K students select remote, and we had 96 of our kinder students select remote. So we have a large combination of that going on right now. This week on the 19th, our survey goes out, and I think Dr. Busby is going to talk to you a little bit more about that in just a moment. And then on September 8th, we will have our third first day of school, and we will welcome everyone that wants traditional in-person learning to join us on the 8th. So it's been pretty exciting at the elementary. Any questions? Great.
Thank you.
Okay. We haven't gotten nearly as far along as she's gotten because we haven't welcomed grade levels back. But what we have done is we began virtual instruction for secondary on August 13th, and it will continue to September 7th. I don't know if you can recognize the person at the top of that, the teacher at the top of this screen. Her name's on there. I didn't block that name out. I blocked everything else out. And the kids usually look normal in the Zooms. That's not our Zoom software. We did that for privacy purposes. But if you look closely, you can see that's Brenda Bevan, and Brenda Bevan proves a lot of things. But one thing she proves is even old dogs can learn new tricks. But gosh, she's been around. She retired two or three times. Can you keep hiring her back? She's awesome. But she made me promise that I used this in the presentation. She wanted you guys to know that the reason she is making it is because of her team and her daughter. And all I can say is I'm glad I was nice to the new teachers in Texas history. They've helped her out these last few years. They could have easily thrown me under the bus, and they still can. But it is a team effort.
Did she give you permission to say even old dogs?
We go way back. We go way, way back. She calls me some worse names. But it's truly a team effort. And Andy's campus is indicative of all of our campuses. They're really working together as teams because not everybody knows how to do it, and not everybody's as technologically advanced as an ex teacher. And so they're working together to make it work because they love our kids. And they'll be working just as hard when we have 95% of them back and five remote as they are right now with 100% remote. We did welcome some students back on campus on Monday. We had our non-internet students come, and we've had some of our special population students come. So we had a bus delivery drop off, so it was exciting to see kids getting off the bus again. They came with their masks because kids 10 and up have to wear their masks. And it's important that they wear their masks because we can't possibly keep them six feet apart. There's going to be 1,150 of them in a building that's designed for 1,204. So we're almost at capacity, and we're working really hard, keep processes in place. But close contact with your mask on is different than close contact without a mask. And so we're allowed to break that six-foot guideline as long as both participants are wearing masks. So that's why it's really important for us to stress to our kids that they've got to wear their mask. And junior high is probably going to be a tough grade, but we'll get it done. Even the bear sports the new fashion accessory. It's got a shield on, I believe. First day of secondary, we had students in the computer lab working on the virtual lessons. All our teachers came down and checked in with them if they knew that their kids were in the building, that were in their normal classes. Instead of being able to Zoom with them, they went down and checked in with them and got to know them in person. Because if they can't Zoom with them, you know, the kid can't be on at the same time. You can say they're not six feet apart there, but as long as they're continuing to wear their masks, TEA says we are good to go, and they're working off CDC guidelines. So hopefully, we're safe. Teachers are still working with kids and are still going to work with kids. They're going to look slightly different because they're going to have face shields on or face masks on, and the kids are going to have face masks on. But it's still going to happen, and teachers can't wait to have all students back on campus. That's what we do. You know, you don't know what you have until it's gone. Is that a song? You really don't. You don't know. You think the whole year, you're going, man, I think the holiday, I think one of those days where the kids aren't here. But we need the kids. It's not the same without the kids here. And then our phase in, of course, instruction will continue remotely for all students until the 31st, but on the 31st, we will be welcoming back sixth grade and ninth grade. And that's a great grade to welcome back because they're bringing to the building. We can learn the procedures and the traditions of the school. It's going to allow us to practice, practice lunch, practice these bells that we're releasing, and teach the kids that have never been on the building, they can learn the slow and hallway traffic and so on on those days in small groups. Still a lot of kids, 350 kids at each school. On September 8th, all grades, levels will be welcomed back to school for in-person learning. So we'll wait for that September 8th day. Can I take this to your board slide? My gosh.
I don't mind boring y'all. So we have welcomed some of our special populations back to campus for their individual services that they're receiving. Our staff within our special education and 504 teams are working very hard to make sure that accessibility is still a part of their learning, whether they are physically coming to campus or if they're still remote learning. We're making sure that our parents that are needing that training, we've been inviting parents to come and access things like Kurzweil and make sure that they know how to accommodate their students' work through CSO or Google Classroom, whichever applies to the grade level of their child. And again, individually, working with teachers to make sure that they understand all the tools that they have at their hands, just depending on their learning curve of technology comfort, making sure that they're able to provide what their students need and that they feel comfortable in doing so and that they understand the tools that they're working with. We've offered our related services on a scheduled basis. Our team really collaborated very hard to make sure that we were making that doable and feasible for our parents, that we're bringing them up to receive orientation and mobility along with speech services, and then we also need physical therapy, trying to make that happen at one time for that parent and that student so it didn't disrupt a lot of virtual learning at the other points of the week. So that's gone very smooth. There's still a few kinks that we're working out, but our parents are wonderful and our staff members are working very hard to make sure that that's going best for kids. Students accessing the alternate curriculum on their campuses have been practicing routines and transitioning back to campus, again, working with the masks and learning to social distance within our classrooms. The students that are receiving dyslexia interventions and specifically those that are nearing the end of their program and potentially might have finished prior to COVID at the end of the school year, we're really focusing on those groups and making sure that they're coming up to access their interventionist. Our interventionists are also providing those resources virtually as they did in the spring, providing the flip grids and making sure that they have choice in what they're doing in their activities, but making sure that it addresses the concerns of each individual student receiving those dyslexia interventions. And then just to share that we are utilizing grant funding that I applied for, and we were able to obtain for the district to help us add additional contract work to help us catch up with our evaluations that we're pending prior to all of this and many parts of it, evaluation for special education. And even sometimes 504 requires face-to-face and cannot be done virtually. There are parts that can be done up to a certain point, but we really ultimately need to work with the student, have classroom observations. Aside from observing through Zoom with the parent over a computer, that's not the same as really a classroom environment. So we're glad to be able to add those additional supports and be able to invite some of those families up to finish assessments that were started and piece those together so that our kids are getting what they need the fastest we can get that to them with valuable and reliable evaluations. So I was thankful that we were able to get that additional funding to help at such a crucial time, along with all of the staff that is working just hours upon hours to make sure that we're doing the best we can for all of our kids. Any questions?
COVID, COVID across the state of Texas, the state of Texas requires each school district to make some reports when a COVID case comes about. And Montgomery ISD had to make one of those reports today. We are required to make a report to our public health department in Montgomery County. And what we have to do is we call the Montgomery County Public Health Department. We just tell them that, all we have to do is say Montgomery ISD has a case. We don't have to say a name. We don't have to say teacher, student. All we say is we have a case. Then what happens then is the entity that tested, that person that tested positive, sends the county the information of the individual. And then the county starts that process of close contact. You've heard of close contact quite a bit tonight, and close contact is very important. When a person is in close contact with a COVID-positive person, then that individual has to quarantine for 14 days in order to not spread it to others if they are determined to be in close contact. You've heard quite a bit tonight that masks can determine whether or not you're in close contact. So again, we are encouraging everybody to wear masks, and 10 and up are required to wear masks. But when it comes to determining close contact, the school districts are going to have to take the lead on the close contact in schools. As I talked to the gentleman today about close contact, he said, Mr. Morris, we are so backlogged that we are reporting today cases that are already outside of the 14th day incubation period. So school districts are going to have to take, across the state of Texas, are going to have to take the responsibility for determining close contact, communicating with those people that are possibly in close contact, and then of course, quarantining them for the 14 days. Then we have to send letters to our parents and to the close contact individuals. But that's the process, and again, we have to report to the public health department, and then we are going to have to take the lead on the close contact and communicating with those folks. Personal protective equipment, or PPEs. We have received from the state of Texas masks, shields, hand sanitizers, thermometers. The only thing that we have not received from the state of Texas is gloves. Across the state of Texas, the gloves are backordered to every school district right now. We also have partners with some people locally, and we want to thank those folks. We want to thank the city of Montgomery and administrators for getting us in contact with Montgomery County and the folks that we needed to talk to about possibly getting some supplies donated. And through that contact, we have received some donated shields and additional donated hand sanitizer. And then we also want to thank Matt Davis. He's a parent at Oak Hill. He is also with the HCA, U.S. Healthcare and Conroe. They donated 100 masks to us. We want to say thank you. We're trying to partner with them. They're trying to partner with us. We're trying to support the county. They're trying to support us. This is a team effort, and it's a big task, but I think we can all take care of it. Want to report on transportation. Yesterday, we had 82 kids ride the bus. It was interesting as I was driving around the district or driving to, I went to Stewart Creek first yesterday, and I see these buses going by me, and yeah, there our drivers are with their masks on. They look good. Come by my house and wave at me, and there they are in their masks. Our ridership almost doubled today. We had 159 students on buses today. And then child, child nutrition, excuse me, not child care, child nutrition. I want to thank Lena Nuschbauer and her team. They're feeding breakfast. They're feeding lunch. They're feeding virtual students who come up and pick up their units, take them home with them. They're doing a lot, and they're kind of getting in the groove with this pre-K and the non-internet kids that are coming on campus. And Lena, your group has done an awesome job, and I appreciate you and your entire team so much. So I'm going to let Lena kind of tell y'all a little bit about how she's keeping safe in the kitchen, keeping kids safe.
First of all, for our department, we already have to follow very strict guidelines, sanitation guidelines, sort of Montgomery County Health Department, and we've always worked on trying to prevent any type of foodborne illnesses and protecting our students. And so now we're just taking a little bit of the stuff above. And so we're already washing our hands and doing already washing our hands and doing gloves. We do that all day long, multiple times a day. We have signage at our back doors, making sure that people know that if we're entering, they must have a mask on. And all of our vendors, we have already had their COVID plans, and so we are making sure that the vendors that come and make the deliveries at our schools, that they're doing the same things that all of the rest of us are doing and trying to protect themselves and our staff as they come through the back door. We've increased sanitizing doorknobs and handles and making sure we are doing that multiple times a day. We're also making sure that all of our staff are either wearing masks or shields, and that is when you come to the back door before you ever self-in, you must have it on. It's just no, no questions asked. Plastic shields have been hung at all of our cashier stations to be able to protect the cashier and the student when they're coming in, from the paper that we own. It'd be the same thing of what you see at Kroger's and some of the other places of cashier stations. We're sanitizing our serving lines in between lunches using disposable towels instead of reusable towels. As we spray all of the sanitizer on the towels and we're wiping down everything the kids can prove, then we're disposing them with those towels so we're not going to use them again. We are using individual wrapped cupery. We usually have a, a stain, a utensil stain where the student would go and push the handle, and then the utensil would be released. Well, we went to all wrapped cupery, so no, nobody's hands would be constantly touching that. We have also gone to actually display our fresh fruits and vegetables. It used to look so beautiful on the line. Now they have lids over them or they have plastic wraps. And so today I noticed at the elementary school, it was a challenge because it had a lid on it, so they would just walk by. They really could not see what was inside there. As before, it would just just be displayed for them to see and they would take them. So that's going to be the next challenge for us, is making sure that they know what's inside those closed lids. And so, and the next thing that we have is that students use a pin pad when they come in, and they would put their ID number, and then that's how their meal would be paid for through as they're walking through. Well, we are going, some of the schools are doing barcode, and so the students are not touching any of the pin pads, and then all our cashiers will be putting their names or numbers. So there's not a multiple hand usage on any of our pin pads either. So I feel like our staff are really working hard to make sure, as always, that our kids and our staff are most important, and they, we are serving them safely at all times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will talk a little bit about our technology update. As we talked before, we implemented a new system with, called Class Link. We actually made this decision back in June to switch to this platform, and we began the process to set up the platform in June. There was a lot of background steps getting ready to set it up, as it changed a lot of backend processes in the way that we set up and do active directory and creating accounts and all of those things. So there was a tremendous amount of work that went into that. So I do want to give a shout out to our technology department for their hard work on putting all the pieces together and making it work. And this is kind of like driving a new car. When you get a new car, there's all kinds of fancy new buttons and features and things that you're figuring out. And sometimes you push a button and the wipers came on, but you really didn't mean for the wipers to came on. That was supposed to be the blinker. So we're still figuring out a lot of what some of the bells and whistles do and, and making sure that we're capable of using all of those bells and whistles to the best that we can. We've learned a lot of things in our rollout. I would say the majority of it went smoothly and well. However, there were a few things that we learned, such as if you are first logging into Class Link, there's an option where it asks you to please set up your recovery questions. And the purpose of that is so that if you ever forget your password, you can go back later, answer the security questions, and reset your own password. You don't have to contact the school or technology department to do that. Well, for some reason, on the same screen as that is the reset password button. And if you click on the reset password button and change your password and get out of the system before you answered those questions, you're locked. And so that was some of the growing pains that we had as we rolled out that, that caused some issues. So I know we had some parents who had to contact the school to get then a password reset and then start that process over. So we have tried to, and I'll talk about that in the next step, we are trying to put some resources out there to try to prevent that from moving forward. Talking to the campuses, I think we're kind of over the initial hump of, of the major issues, and we just have a sprinkling of, of those few to, to help get started now. Google Classroom and CSO and Office 365 are all available through Class Link. Again, the intention behind going to Class Link was that one spot for students to log in and then be able to find all of the resources that they need there. So we did roll out with those three platforms for the beginning, because those are our most used tools. Our next phase that we will be getting ready to roll out is we will be getting adding more and more curriculum programs into Class Link. So if there are additional resources that teachers are wanting to use, they will begin to show up in there. And, and that will come in stages as we roll those out. So that's what's coming next. I did want to highlight our parent training resources. When you go to the district website and you go to Montgomery Moving Forward, there is a link for parent training resources. On this page, there will be, there are already how-to videos, like how to log into Class Link. So if you watch that video, it will highlight that step, but make sure you reset those recovery passwords. And then we also added a couple of other tips for troubleshooting login issues that maybe if you go there, that will help walk through and address some of those issues. We are also posting additional links to resources as we're learning things. We will continue to update that so that it'll be a good resources for parents to go to and, and hopefully be able to help address any issues that they may be having or come across. Or not just issues, but to also learn about the platforms so that they can figure out, just like we are figuring out all the bells and whistles, they can figure out then all the bells and whistles too that go along with each program. I don't have this on the slide, but I do want to add that we're going to continue to support our teachers as well. I know they had a lot to learn and, and prep and getting ready for all of this rollout, but training doesn't stop, even for our teachers. We have a great group of, we call them our TMS. They're our technology integration mentors. There's at least one on each campus. And our TMS are fabulous about supporting their campus, but they're also fabulous about supporting the district as a whole. So like this week, today, one of our TMS hosted a session on additional features in CSO for teachers. And on Thursday, we have another TIM that is doing a session on Google Classroom and additional steps. So we will continue to offer those to our teachers each week as well, too, so we can continue to stay strong in our remote learning. Last thing on here, we have talked about ordering additional laptops previously. I know one of the questions, I think, and Mr. Dossi, you had asked us, is could we tap into those great deals that the state was offering through Operation Connectivity? And at the time, the answer was no. But TA came back and said, guess what? We are able to extend this. And again, they gave that really short timeframe of, but if you want to do it, do it by this date. And so we did take advantage of that. Our total inventory that we are now ordering is 2,389. That is what we were eligible to be able to purchase at those additional rates. That is still under the original cost that we brought to the board previously to be approved to purchase the laptops, so we're still good there. And then we have also been investigating this last bullet here. We may be able to, able to tap into some additional CARES Act funding, and I'm looking forward to a future board meeting where we can tell you exactly what that final number is going to be, because I think we're gonna, I think it's going to be a happy number. Any, any questions?
We like happy numbers.
Thank you, Amy.
Oh, sorry. I do have a question. What's to come next? Yes, this is one of the important parts for all of our parents. So what's coming next is the survey. And then, just like you said, I know we have surveyed, 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 but this, if you didn't do any other survey as a parent, please do this one. This is our final selection of that instructional setting of, do you want your child to come to traditional in-person learning, or are you going to continue the remote learning? This survey will go out tomorrow, and it will stay open until the 25th. You should get communication from your campuses that encourage you to answer the survey. But again, just like before, this is one of those that we do want you to share. Tell your friends. If you know somebody who's not checking or getting emails, keep sharing so that we can get as many participants in that survey as we can. Because like Dr. Morrison mentioned, this is going to be critical for the number of students that we're welcoming back, so we can plan appropriately for transportation, food services, and all the other resources that we need for those students. And then just a reminder that August 31st is the date that sixth and ninth grade will be coming back. I have a sixth grader. He'll be one of those. And then September 8th is that date when all grade levels at all campuses are welcomed back. Okay. Now, any questions?
On the survey on the 19, on this coming out, are we also asking about transportation?
Yes, sir, we are. So the, the question will focus first on which method you're choosing, traditional or remote. And then if you are choosing traditional, it'll ask your transportation methods. So that, because we do want to try to make our best plans for the transportation service as possible.
What are you expecting?
Oh, that's a great question. You know, when we did the last survey, it was a very high number that we're anticipating coming back. You know, I think we were like 81% that wanted to come back at that time.
Have you changed your mind for better for worse?
Say that.
Have you changed your mind better or worse based on?
No, I, I, we have not gotten anything to indicate that it's going to fluctuate one way or the other. We do have it set up when you take the survey and you make that selection. I know it's hard to make that commitment as a parent that I'm going to come traditional or I'm going to stick remote. We, there is an option at grading periods that if they need to choose another method, or if there are health considerations that come up that would need them to change from one setting to another, we would make accommodations for that.
But I think the number is an interesting one, Mr. Ergle. I'm really glad you're asking the question. So if you ask us what we would prefer, the number, let's say 85% returning or 75%, we want our kids in school. I think Mr. McFadden made a very impassioned plea about how much we would love to have our students come back to school, and our teachers want that. But if you had to say what would be easier between 85 and 75, we've been having this conversation, actually 75% is easier. And if you think about a third grade classroom at Stewart Creek, if we have four teachers teaching students, then if 75% of the kids came back, you'd have three teachers teaching in-person instruction, and one teacher could be the virtual teacher, and it works out just lovely. Where it gets complicated is that 85%, 90%, you can't crowd into those classrooms because of mandated class sizes, nor would you want to in a world where you're trying to socially distance. But then if all four teachers are teaching students, then how do you accommodate the students that are being taught virtually? There are answers. It will look different in some cases, grade level, grade level, across every school. It will look different in the different schools. We're going to have to work tirelessly with our campus principals to come up with the best answer. And it could be a rotation of how we do the virtual learning, so it's not totally on the individual school. We're just going to have to work our way through it. I can't emphasize enough our plea for our, if you answer one survey in K-12 or anything, please answer this one, because we're going to have a very short period of time to do bus routes. We're going to have a very short period of time to think about what, what, what food needs are going to be there. We're going to have a very short time to think about entering and exiting our campuses. And then, of course, the most important thing is the academic programming of our students. And so we want to give our, our families enough time to answer this question. But we're going to have a very, very short turnaround to get the adequate and appropriate responses. So again, please, if, if you're talking to your neighbors, and you're like, I'm so tired of this, please, your indulgence, please do this one. It's really critical and really important.
Are we going to follow up with parents that, that have not?
So we will, we will absolutely, as we get closer and closer. What's really good about this survey is though it's a district survey, it will go from the campuses, and we think that will yield a higher return rate. As we get closer to the date, our schools will do a great job communicating every way that they communicate. And then, once we find out that we have families we haven't heard back from, we'll start reaching after them directly. And again, it's, this can be important that we find 100% response from all of our families.
Are the parents aware that the technology is not available until several weeks?
As far as the laptops and the hotspots that were originally ordered. So when they did this survey before, they had reached out to the ones on the survey and that indicated they didn't have those devices, especially the hotspots. Those were ones that we focused on because we knew we couldn't provide that. And those were the ones that were invited back to come to the, and use the computer lab so that they're not without access right now.
Sure. Okay.
Anything else?
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
So, Mr. Dossi, by May, I, it seems like the word of the day pops up every day, and the word of the day for me is grace. And I had a conversation with a parent that was, had some concerns, and, and, and she started talking about grace and patience. And then she was very direct about her concerns, and, and we, I think, came to a good place in the conversation. We are not going to be perfect. We are going to try to be excellent. Every day brings new challenges, and every day we're having to think, what is our response? What's the procedure? Who notifies the health department? Who does the close contact tracing at the school? How do you account for different programs, different structures? There's nothing about this that's familiar. There is no playbook. There's 15,000 school districts across the United States trying to figure it out. And anybody who says they have the whole answers, you, you should put a lot of doubt on that. We are going to bring our best selves every day. We've got amazing teachers and great principals, and that's a phenomenal place to start and a supportive community. We are going to come up with the right answers, but I will just say, the reason I said grace was the word of the day was I had a text right before this meeting from a parent, last name Grace. And, and it was really about how well the school year started, her high expectations having been met. And I wish every text that we get from parents or communications is going to end that way. We're stumbled, but we will always think about what it's going to take to educate your children well and to keep our students and staff safe. And that's a core commitment, and we're not going to falter on that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. I appreciate it, Dr. Morrison, and all the staff and administration. We do have one final agenda item here, which is the report on the cooperative purchasing and management fees.
Mr. Dossi, it's two. And, and I, I have a high expectation for this, because, you know, a rule of comedy is you save your best joke for the last. And so we thought the show tonight was going to be on our opening of, of school plans. But, you know, Mr. Lynn said the most riveting part of this board meeting was going to be on the purchasing and management fees and the monthly financial report. I never doubt our CFO, so I'm, I'm expecting an amazing show here.
You got to give the people what they want.
Yeah.
Always leave them wanting more. So the cooperative purchasing and management fees, this is a report that we're required to present to the board each year under Texas Education Code. And it's a simple report that just outlines the amount of purchasing fees that we paid for the prior year for the different co-op firms that we're a member of. And so for the 1920 year, we paid a total of $900 in co-op fees, $100 to the state of Texas for their membership fee, and $800 to Byboard when we purchased buses earlier this spring. That's one of their requirements. And so that is the extent of the report. I wish it could be more thrilling than that, but unfortunately, it's just one of those legal mandates that we're, we're meeting tonight. But I'll be happy to answer your questions. But I'll be happy to answer your questions.
We'll mention the rebate we give because of that too.
The rebate for the, for the 18, 19 school year, we did receive a rebate from the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of $42,606.2. So there are, membership has its privileges sometimes, isn't that the famous saying?
Be congratulated for making that really, really interesting.
I'm not responsible for the material, I'm doing the best I can here. The last item is the monthly financial report. You'll notice that it looks a whole lot different than it has in years past. Not saying that this is the final version that we're going to stick with, but I'm trying to consolidate and make your board packets a little smaller and more manageable for you. So if there are things that you would like to seek included in that report, please reach out to Dr. Morrison or myself and let me know and I'll be happy to incorporate that into the report.
Well, thank you. Did anybody, did any of the board have any questions about that?
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. So with that, the board is going to go ahead and go into closed meetings as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act to discuss the issues that are on the agenda and we will be back after a while. Okay, we're going to come back from our open, our closed session and do I have any motions from the board? We're missing a tray.
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the personnel as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion passes. And for the second motion for the resolution?
I will make a motion that the board approve the resolution for COVID-19 planning as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned.